Is that better?
I have an old handkerchief. It's my house, yeah. Beautiful. I got it still on some drive. Probably can do it thirty-two, thirty-three, or forty-five. I have forty-five with the little clip in there. I used to have a carrying around somewhere.
Well, the best are carried around.
I support stuff.
And now.
All of this makes sense to me.
Yeah, exactly. I think the best one was going to my dad's. He was told about, yeah, the stack at Atrix. And it's all in the. The one I grabbed was Acid Rock. It's deep purple, black stab, red stab, blue. Jan Stoffler, she went to Midtown. It's like, this is the coolest music ever. And I was addicted to the rock.
So I.
Never, ever hear on the radio and then they're like, oh, it's a butterfly.
Oh, yeah.
I know what happened, I am butterfly.
Same thing that happened to all the others.
Well, I know my man is probably good, but.
No, I'm Friday night.
I got, you know, I'm gonna, I gotta repeat this all the longest time I think I've recorded.
Yeah, by the way.
It was on one whole sign. It was like two sets of things. Two other four tracks on a new track.
So Friday night, I'm going to Metallica.
Hi.
Um, a golden one set. I've got great seats. Oh, God.
This is a, this is a chance to get him. Send somebody in there, he's going to Metallica.
He's going to Metallica, he's not going?
And get somebody to, get them to my video.
Are you wearing your Christmas suit?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Pricey tickets.
Our Metallica tickets are quite.
I want to see where I go. He does. He'll be fathering children after your death.
Well, I got that guy.
Oh, did you? Yeah, a lot of times you'll see. Mike, I have singers, um, and.
I love you all.
I, I'm, I'm kinda like this on the stem.
Yellow Submarine. Oh, my God.
Where's that?
I'm gonna make sure. Beatles was kinda like in the beginning. I know every else off by our.
Who's that?
Beatles, yeah.
I had, I had.
Called to order the meeting of the Winter City Council on Tuesday, December fourth. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Cowan?
Here.
Lauren?
Here.
New?
Here.
Mayor Biase?
Here.
Thank you. Marie, would you like to lead us to the pledge of allegiance, please?
What we do is cheer the flag of the United States of America. United States of America, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, approval of the agenda.
Mayor and councilor know to this city agenda.
No true approval.
Second.
If motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, pass or no. Next, we will have council staff comments.
Councilmember Lauren. It's been a busy time. On November eighth, I represented Winter City Council at the Yolo Food Bank Breakfast Presentation, seven a.m., Conway Ranch. In the evening, I manned a table at the district's Heritage Night at Shirley Ramager, along with other members of the Hispanic Advisory Committee. Really beautiful presentation of culture. From November twelfth to today, I've had numerous phone teleconferences with Satch Valley, the Sacramento Valley Division of the League of California Cities. We're seeking to form a rural working group within the organization. November fifteenth, I met with Principal Ray Hearn about the Winter's College Promise Program, which is moving forward with the support of Rotary. More details to come on that. Our deadline for applications was not November fifteenth, but due to the school closing and the evacuations, everything's been postponed. November eighteenth was Save the Banks. It was a meeting at the public safety facility. Many residents came out of homes along Dry Creek to learn about what they can do to stabilize their banks with native plants and reduce invasive fire adaptive plans. On November twenty-fifth, Sunday right after Thanksgiving, I attended and helped organize a fundraiser for Paradise Camp Fire Victims. We made sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars in cash and cards getting, and it was well-attended. Bill was there, Tom was there, Cecilia was there. There's a lot of people from Yolo County electeds. November twenty-eighth to December first, I attended the League of California Cities Leaders Conference and brought back a lot of information on policies. I was also voted in as Secretary for the League's Women's Conference. I came home to see part of the Tractor Parade, which was the biggest tractor parade I've ever seen. It was beautiful, it was fun, it was really festive, and kudos to everybody who organized it. Yesterday, I met with John Donlevy to review tonight's agenda, and I also had a phone conference with the Rural Cities Task Force and was selected as the new facilitator moving forward for the all sixteen districts in California. I also had a meeting with the Hispanic Advisory Committee, and they dispersed several checks from funds earned and from earned funds and donated funds from the Festival de la Comunidad. And today, I prepared for council and also prepared for my first meeting, leading that rural working group, which is Thursday. That's it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, today I had a phone conference with the city manager. Ten minutes. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember New?
On the twenty-seventh, I attended the groundbreaking for.
Your mic, here. Your mic, I just, there you go.
Okay. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the groundbreaking for Winter's Health Care and. They have this, I think a greater turnout than they thought that they were going to have, really, and it was very nicely done. Meeting of houses. Been a few minutes talking with our city manager about that. And then on the twentieth, I went to the three-year rescue fundraiser, and they seem to be doing fairly well at raising funds. On, I also attended the Tractor Parade and practically couldn't see the parade from my own front yard. So many people in our front yard. It was certainly a good turnout, and it was a lot of fun. And then finally today, I met with the city manager, discussed the night's agenda. Thank you.
Your pro, Tim Cowan?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. On the, back on the eleventh, when I over, I attended a youth day meeting to get started on youth day for 2019. And believe it or not, here we go again. On the fourteenth, I attended the strategic planning meeting. And on the fifteenth, I attended a two-by-two with the county. And then also on the fifteenth, John and I attended an animal shelter task force meeting. And we might be the smallest jurisdiction at the table, but it's our city manager that came up with a seven-step process to move this whole thing forward. Everybody's sitting there trying to figure out what to do, and John scribbled down a bunch of notes, and here you go. And based on that blueprint, they're going to move forward with a presentation that's going to go out to all the different jurisdictions for how they want to move forward with the possible JPA for animal services, completely based on John's seven-point plan. Way to go, Mr. Demlow.
No, we, we were suffocating in the Davis library as long as the smoke and the air pollution was hitting us from the campfire.
And John got us out of there.
I wanted to get out of there, he still gets it in there.
That's right. And it worked. On the nineteenth, I attended a meeting with Chief Miller and other staff members and chamber members on the tractor parade and tree lighting. On the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, with a lot of help from my son and my wife Kathy, we put twelve thousand lights on the tree in the town. And I also want to thank Dave King from Castle Lake King for, and back of it, for lightness uses Man Lift this year to get the lights on with. And on the twenty-seventh, they attended the Winter's Healthcare, the Healthcare Groundbreaking, which, as you said, was well-attended. And also on the twenty-seventh, they attended the First Citizen of the Year Selection Dinner. And on the thirtieth, I attended the opening of the Winter's Museum. That was really nicely done, and they've done a good job with that. It's worth going to see. Kudos to everybody involved with that one. During the week leading up to the Tractor Parade, we built a club for Santa to come in on. It seems my wife had to think of something else for me to do that week. Which I don't think I really needed, but she seemed to. And I gotta thank my kids, Katie and Tony, that live here in town, and my grandson for helping with that. But I gotta tell you, believe me, it would not have gotten completed without the help of the mayor's wife, Mona. She was a huge help for us, so, to get that club done for Santa, for I don't know. And then on the first, spent the day doing prep work for the Tractor Parade and tree lighting. And thanks again to some of my kids and Chris Calvert for all their help with getting things set up and cleaning up afterwards. Couldn't do it without, without them, that's for sure, or I'm gonna be tasked out with park somewhere. Special thanks to everybody that entered the parade. We had forty-five entries this year, and visitors quite literally from all over the world. I had some friends that actually met a couple of gentlemen that were here from China, that were visiting on business in Davis and said, we heard about the parades, we came to Winter's for the parade. So we can now lay claim to having a world-famous Tractor Parade. And then last night, I attended the Senior Foundation Dinner, and yesterday I also met with the city manager to review the agenda for tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see, on November the ninth, I attended the Chamber Board Meeting. On November thirteenth, the time commission meeting. On the fourteenth, we had the two-by-two with the school district. Also on the fourteenth, we had our strategic planning, where we discussed in-depth infrastructure issues for our future and our city. On the fifteenth, we held the Economic Development Committee Meeting. On the nineteenth, I attended the Winter's Peter Creek Park Committee Meeting. On the twentieth, I assisted with delivering some meals for the community Thanksgiving Dinner, and I just want to say thank you to Marie and Quinn and all the rest of the people in your group that organized it all. I know it took a lot of people to do it, but without you and Quinn organizing it, it would not have happened. And thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thanks, Missouri.
Helping the people in Winter's who don't have enough to eat on Thanksgiving or any day, and those who couldn't get out, but were able to bring it to their house. So thank you. Um, let's see, on the twenty-fifth, I attended the campfire fundraiser, I had beers of brewery, and also to carry us a delivery, because they donated the beer that they brewed for that, and there's space out there, and just let us have that fundraiser out there, so. It was very generous of them doing that, and very successful.
Four thousand dollars.
Yeah, one thousand dollars worth of beer sales in that one afternoon. Uh, let's see, on the twenty-seventh, I also attended the Winter's Healthcare Groundbreaking, which would be a great facility for winners and asset community. On the thirtieth, I also attended the Winter's Museum Opening. Our winners, um, society, historical society has done a great job pulling things together, and they put a really nice display. If you haven't been down there yet, make an effort to get down there. I'm not sure what their operating hours are gonna be yet, but some really nice stuff about the history of Winter's. Let's see, on December first, I attended the best Tractor Parade in the world. And tree lighting afterwards, and I just also want to say thank you to Wade and Kathy and their son Nathan for putting up all the lights. Nah, sorry, they put up lights for, I think, twenty hours on that tree, and they just, what a, what a dedication, and it's a beautiful tree. If you haven't seen that, go down there and see it. Yes, our Tractor Parade is getting very well-known and deserving itself. Um, on the third, I met with the city manager to review, uh, review the agenda, and also on the third, I attended the Winter's Senior Foundation Christmas Dinner. That's all that I have done in the last month since our last Christmas. With that, I want to thank all of our council members for all the time they spent with meetings, working done for our city, and thank you for your dedication. Let's see, moving on, we will have public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Anybody here that would like to speak to the non-agenda item? Say none, and we will move on to the consent calendar.
Uh, Mayor and Council, a couple items. Uh, tonight, item A, the minutes from the regular meeting on November sixth. Item D is a resolution, uh, appointing the primary and alternate representatives onto the Yolo Emergency Communications Agency. Uh, I, currently, I sit on the board for YECO. We had a, uh, in our audit, one of the comments from the auditor was, the, the, because we've had transition, they wanted an official resolution as documentation for the appointment of both the primary and the alternate representatives. That would be myself as the primary, and Chief Miller will be the alternate on that. Um, the reason why the chief is, is not the primary on it is basically, I'm, I'm the appointee of the, uh, our Yolo city managers who sit on that. I've been working on budget, on capital. We also have some facility things that we're working on, so I'll probably stay in the primary role for probably the next eighteen months, and then I'll probably move off and have the chief do that. Item C, uh, are some purchases, uh, back on November sixth, the council received, uh, the information accepted, uh, beverage recycling money that we had to spend. This is the first set of purchases, about twenty-three thousand dollars' worth of recycled products. Park benches and, and tables, trash cans, there's a list in there that Carol has, has put in. Um, item D is, is mostly an information item on, on some purchases, uh, for some repairs to the well seven, uh, generator. The contractor, the contractor panel went out on it. Staff's boughting the part, about an eight-thousand dollar part, shipping it out here, then it would be installed, but need to get that fixed. Finally, Gar House, the city's representative on the Sacramento mosquito and vector control district that we formally said is a, a rep in Toshie, moved to Solano County. Uh, but just a basic update on what's going on in the world of mosquitoes and vectors. Uh, this, the consent calendar.
Thank you. Questions?
What is the proof consent calendar?
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. We have no presentations tonight, we have quite a few discussion items going. First one is the public hearing and consideration of Resolution 2018-61. Uh, city council, the city winners adopting the 2018 Yolo County Operational Area Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
That's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, staff is bringing before you tonight and asking that you receive the 2018 Yolo Operational Area Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. Conduct a public hearing and approve Resolution 2018-61, adopting, uh, the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Um, this is a living document, although we bring it before you every, I think, five years for formal adoption. The team that coordinates the development of this plan meets on it typically three times annually, so it's a living, breathing document that we will continue to update. But with that, I would also point out to the council that with us tonight, we have Dana Carey, who is the Emergency Services Manager for Yolo County, and exceptionally talented, and also David Block, also with Yolo OES. Uh, David was the ring leader for the development of this hazard mitigation plan. I'd like to give you one concrete example of, uh, implementation of a hazard mitigation plan. This last year, uh, David worked with our fire department, CAL FIRE, CAL Trans, and the nineteen property owners between, I think, a little, a little west of the city limits, but all the way up to the, the Monticello Dam, uh, and were able to get permission from all but one landowner to do a preemptive burn, um, uh, because if you look in the, in the text of this hazard mitigation plan, you'll see that most of them, most of these fires start immediately adjacent, um, to the roadways. So, uh, doing that preemptive burn, although it, it didn't work because a fire came down from the north, but it was a great idea, and, and I expect that, that we will continue doing this kind of hazard mitigation. So with that, John, anything you would like to add, or? Again, I, I can't overstate how fortunate we are to have the talented people that we have assisting us in, in emergency services from Yolo County. They really are extraordinary. So with that, staff, would answer any questions, or at least deflect into the people who know what we're doing?
Any questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, thank you, Dan. So we'll open up the public hearing at six forty-nine. Anybody from the public like to speak to this? Okay, so now we'll close the public hearing at six forty-nine. Okay, any comments or discussion for the council members on this? It's a huge amount of information in there, and I just, I know this is something that's been put together a while back, but just going about updating it all is a huge task. Thank you for all the work you've put into this. One question I have, I know that one of the new things that's added is, uh, so this has to be done so that if there were a disaster, then we could get FEMA assistance, right?
Yeah, the, it's a five-part plan that's required through FEMA. Uh, in California, it, it, um, California is broken up into various regions for the Office of Emergency Services. And then within those regions, there are what are known as operational areas, and that would be Yolo County. In this case, uh, Dana and David basically oversee all the emergency services planning for each one of the cities. And I, I will share, they've done an exceptional job on grants, coordination, putting together the plans together. Um, the, the one thing, and this may surprise everybody, but federal government is very bureaucracy-driven. You have to have all these plans in place within the format that they come out with. And, you know, at the end of the day, the multi-hazard plan, as it comes, takes, uh, all of the format that needs to be put together for the county, takes in all the emergency plans for each one of the jurisdictions, puts them all into one document, identifies the hazards, and, uh, includes mitigation strategies, and then they require the idea for plan evaluation and maintenance. In that five parts of the plan, that's what we're doing right here. This is a previously adopted plan, it gone through the updated, uh, various aspects of the plan. They give an evaluation, how are we doing? That can be reported, uh, and essentially, we're adopting that, and that's what staff's asking for in adopting this resolution. It's basically taking everything, putting it together, and, uh, I will share, you know, is, is the cities and the county work together on shared services? Is we put together our joint emergency management services program, GIMS? Dana, Dana is our fearless leader on all of this stuff. She's put it together, the cities have come together, and there's value adding. The, the reality is that Dana, David, and their team play, you know, it's, it's, it's that force multiplier. Because not only are they putting together the plan, but as, as stuff goes down, I can tell you, every time one of these fires starts around us, Dana's the first one to call. Uh, we're constantly in the loop, so it, uh, it's, it's, it's a gift, and it just keeps on giving. It, it, it's probably one of the best things that we've put together in, in Yolo County in, in many, many years. Uh, it, it literally is a, a top three of the things that we all work cooperatively on, so. Uh, staff's just recommending, uh, that we adopt the resolution, and I know that they need to get this submitted, uh, like tomorrow. If, if you have any questions, we really wish that you would have asked them a long time ago.
So one thing, I know the news that's been happening has to do with the Climate Change Action Plan, is that right?
Yep.
So what's FEMA gonna do, or what, I mean, what kind, I'm not quite clear on what kind of emergency that would be, that we would require FEMA action for climate change action?
Well, um, if Dana wants to answer this, but in short, there's an acknowledgement that we, we've had drought. We have issues that are going on that are facilitating changes, whether it's, you know, the number of fires that we have and, and some of the things that are happening. From a disaster standpoint, no judgment here, there's just a reality. I mean, take our own hills, five consecutive summers, uh, and what is facilitating that? Drought. Uh, and, and so, uh, yeah, you, you include that in?
Yep.
It's a reality, we're just plugging it, it's one of those very tangible aspects that we're just recognizing that there are issues going on with climate. We include it in our overall planning, and we just prepare to execute on it.
And, and just one thing that I can add for the council is that this is kind of a new format for the plan for everybody. FEMA typically only requires that natural hazards be included in your hazard mitigation plan, and we've kind of up that bar, you know? It's only rise to the level of expectation set. We're adding the man-made and the technological hazards, we're identifying how they can affect us, what are some mitigation strategies to help us get around those things? So even though we kind of laugh about the control burn along Highway one twenty-eight because it's fighting from the other direction, it did work. Um, we didn't have nearly as many ignition points along that roadside this year. So even though the public may not see it, because the fire happened in the same area, it is something that we can look forward to. Okay, that worked, how do we put actions like that into procedure and practice? Make them reoccurring so that we can make our community a safer place to live? And climate change is just another one of those, over the last five years that I've been emergency manager, we've seen sinking of the ground level out in the ice landing area that's caused some of our well housings to collapse. All of those things are directly attributable to drought, then, you know, the severity of our fire hazards, Santa Rosa, the car fire, the campfire. Those are all because we had these short periods of rain that made the vegetation grow really fast, and so there's tons of fuel out there now that just takes on and burns, so it's something that we do have to think about, what strategies we have available to us to make. to make everybody a little bit safer going forward.
I have a comment. The League of California Cities usually has three goals that they set out to accomplish that year, and this year we have four. And the fourth goal was climate action, plan addressing natural and man-made disasters. So I think the whole state here is on this.
Good work.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I'm ready to comment.
Our motion?
I have moved to approve adopting the 2018 Yolo County Operational Area Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Do you have a motion?
We have a second. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Call votes? Pass the unanimous. Thank you.
Just as a quick little value add on everything, one of the things that we're working on is what we call the Greater Winners Wildfire Prevention Plan. And this is, again, this is a grant that we've received from CAL FIRE. David is working on that. But just for anybody who's not doing anything, at two o'clock this Thursday at the Public Safety Facility, we've got representatives from Golden Bear Estates. Basically, we're looking at the Winners Fire Protection District area. So we're the lead on this, but we've got a consultant, they're dealing with GIA snapping on this thing. They've been together in an overall plan. Ultimately, we're probably going to put together a local fire council. There's talk right now of expanding it to go up greater than Winters, up into probably Cape and that area. But in two o'clock this Thursday at the Public Safety Facility, anybody who wants to come in. And I will tell you that the meeting was fabulous. The reps that showed up. I was very sure that we had somebody from Vicetus, somebody from Golden Bear, David, I was representing the county. It's a very good process. So anyway, people, anybody can stop.
Thank you for all your work on that. Okay, next agenda item we have is the public hearing in consideration of proposed amendment Chapter 5436, Street Menders, entitled 12 regarding sidewalk construction area food vendors operating within the city limits.
This has taken a little while to get to where it is today. It all sort of started or was spurred on by an application by Buckhorn Food Truck to set up the location at the corner of Frank and Riverwood Avenue in front of the Winners Store. And the ordinance that we had on the books at the time didn't really address that type of situation. The real only food truck that was sort of somewhat addressed in the ordinance had to do with that kind, like you see, is an ice cream truck that travels through a neighborhood or goes to a construction site during certain kinds of day and beats the construction workers. And so we were asked to look at a planning commission, how to amend the ordinance so that food trucks could be a possible business that could locate here in town. And so that's what we did. And there was first a study session on the 24th of July where we talked about that subject matter, and a planning commission weighed in on a number of issues that we brought up. City manager's son, Sam Donlevy, who was a management intern this year, also helped work on drafting the ordinance and held a special meeting on August 8 with businesses along Main Street. There were a couple of issues that we talked about. One had to do with the map that we have on our zoning code being clearer and more easy to understand, and also the proximity of these uses next to schools. So we kind of forged ahead from that. We had a meeting. I'm sorry, during this process, the governor signed a new bill, SB 946, which regulates sidewalk vendors. And our ordinance didn't address the new legislation. It did address to some extent, but not wasn't completely in sync. So we sort of had to back it up a little bit and start working on how to address that. And so they're all under the same general umbrella. And so we had another study session with the planning commission. There were a number of people that spoke at that study session. And finally, on October 23rd, the draft ordinance that you see before you was presented to the planning commission. The planning commission was generally in favor of it. They recommended some changes, which besides the red highlighting, which are changes to the existing code, they're highlighted in yellow. And those changes had to do with some of the recommendations that had been made by staff they felt were unnecessary to include in the ordinance. One was a separation requirement. We proposed a 200-foot separation. That was based on the Buckhorn location and the existing Verducos. They said that that would be something that could be addressed as part of the use permit process. And by the way, I should mention, that's a key point of this. It's going to require a use permit no matter where they locate. So that's a public hearing. Property owners get notified within 300 feet, and they have an opportunity to show up and speak of that item. They also talked about the fact that we were limiting where they could locate in the downtown. We excluded Main Street. And it can mean that there weren't really a lot of locations on Main Street that would work. There are a couple that conceivably could work. But the commission again felt like, you know, pick Main Street out and allow all the other streets that are in the downtown business to stay in. And so again, they recommended Main Street be included. And so we made that change. And then the last, which was probably the most significant, was the separation from public property or schools. Currently, the code, again, not necessarily related to food trucks, called for a 500-foot separation. Again, the planning commission said, they don't see the reason for doing that separation. Again, on a case-by-case basis, if looked at it and if for some reason we were to be inundated with applications, and they were going to be closer than, you know, maybe the city would like, we could always go back and look at that as an amendment to the code. So those are the key changes. There's some changes to the zoning code. We have two land use matrices in our code. One in the general part of the code, and then the other for the downtown. We made changes to those consistent with what was discussed in the ordinance. So now if somebody comes in and is applying for that kind of a use, they know exactly what, where they can locate, and what processes that they have to go through. And added some definitions to the definitions section. You do have in front of you an email from Lorenzo Arce of Country Kitchen. He's come to, I believe, all of the meetings. He wasn't unable to make this one. He makes some points in the email that are valid. But again, all could be addressed as part of the use permit process, and he would be notified as a property owner and as an interested party for an application to come forward. The Buckhorn people likely will at some point come back once this ordinance, assuming you approve it, takes effect. I will notify them that, and that we can sort of bring back their application for a formal review. But one thing that did come up with Country Kitchen, and I can't remember which planning commissioner brought it up, but in the Buckhorn application, and this could all change, they were only asking for, I think, four days a week that they could do this. And the way the ordinance was crafted is theoretically, you couldn't have two of them locating at that intersection. But in reality, you could, because if the three days that the Buckhorn wasn't operating, and somebody wanted to operate on the Country Kitchen site, they could. And so that was one of the other things that was brought up. And as far as site distance goes, we're all well aware of that. And even when we were looking at the Buckhorn before it actually got the chance to be really heard, that was a concern that I had, was that they wanted to locate next to the fuel pumps. And I felt that was going to cause a real problem for people and vehicles trying to come around that corner, especially certain times of day. And so we were looking to move them away from the intersection. But again, that's all part of the individual public hearing process that gives the commission some flexibility to look at the specifics of each application and not come up with a blanket, sort of set a bunch of rules that then you have to figure out how to get away to very often. And the last thing I did mention, which sort of Sam first dealt with, is the size limitation. And we were going to propose that they couldn't be longer than 23 feet and wider than six feet. And then we started thinking, well, someone's going to come up with a 24-footer. And so then what are we going to do? So again, the thought was, they all kind of know what a food truck looks like. They don't, you know, they don't look like a super long bus, and they don't look like a little teeny cart. They're somewhere in between. As far as the sidewalk vending, we pretty much follow the state law as far as how it applies. I will tell you, and I'm pretty sure this is a true statement in any city that you look at, virtually all the sidewalk vendors that you see are unlicensed. And so if cities really wanted to, they could almost force these things because they would then be obligated to get licensed. They'd have to get health department clearances and those kind of things. But in theory, with the new state law, you can set up on any sidewalk and go even to certain parts and establish a cart vending business right there in town. And really, the city can't do much to regulate it. The only real regulation is we can stop them from setting up in a residential neighborhood. If they go through residential neighborhood, they have to be sort of constantly moving, except for when they're actually vending, vending something. So don't want to go too much into that one, because that really was pretty much driven by the state, whereas the food truck ordinance is really up to individual cities. For that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Questions before we open up the public hearing? Dave, the only question I have is, did you get back to Lorenzo Arce?
I sent him an email and told him that this would be given to the council tonight. And then I would let him know what the outcome of your decision was.
But he realizes that there will be individual meetings for every?
I don't know that he knows that.
Okay.
I didn't want to jump too far ahead, because I'm not certain that you're going to approve this tonight. But I will get back to him on Thursday when I'm here again, and let him know exactly how it will play out.
Excellent, thank you. Any more questions? Questions before we, I can't, some questions, Dave. Do you have any idea in general of the condition?
I want to say 1,100 to one-time fee. Part of that, most of that is the noticing requirement that we actually now take on as the city. Rather than have the individual person do it, we predict, put together the list, and then we do notify the property owners and place the ad in newspapers. But I'm doing this off the top of my head. I can't swear that that's the actual amount.
Is it, is it true, I'm pretty sure, just for clarity, the use permit process is handled strictly with staff and the planning commission, correct?
Correct, unless it's a field. And in that cost, theoretically, it's the chances of it being a field.
So then the sidewalk vendors, when we are requiring them to still get a use permit?
No. We actually cannot require that of them. We can require them to get a business license. We can require them not to obstruct sidewalks and some other things. But in all honesty, there's very limited things that we can do as a city that isn't preempted by the state.
They don't even have to get a county permit?
They have to get a county health permit. If they're selling something that's edible, they have to have county health clearance. If they're selling like trinkets and stuff like that, they do not.
Dave, it seems like the City Winners has had more food trucks at events in the last year than I've ever seen. Is there any new process for food trucks at events?
So they'll be exempted. There's language in the ordinance that says if it's part of a sponsored event, and the event includes the food trucks, and it's described in the event that the council will approve, then they're not required to do it. Now, they are still have to get health department clearance. We, and they still have to have a business license. But as far as how many and where they locate, they don't have to go through the condition of use permit process.
Thank you for your presentation.
And with this package, we are requiring the vendors to get business licenses.
Correct. Yeah, that will be condition approval on any of them that come forward. So that they have a business license before they start operating.
Questions prior to the public hearing? Okay. Say none. We'll open up the public hearing at 7:10. Anyone like to speak? Come forward, say a name.
My name is Marie Robehounden. Was a winners resident, and just on the other side. Thank you for pointing that out. The Buckhorn actually paid $1,800 for their conditional use permit, just to clarify that. And that was in late June for this purpose. I'm also the main chairperson for the vendors for Youth Day. So this affects me in a couple of different ways. And like, one of the things with the Buckhorn truck is, one, they are not owned by Buckhorn. I want to make sure that's really clear. They're owned by private owners who are just trying to make their bills pay, you know what I mean? And if you don't have an event to go to, or you're not booked for a wedding, or some kind of party, you've got to find another way to make money. They give more than $10,000 a year to our sports teams in Winters. They also have to have health permits, not just for Yolo County, but Solano County, Sacramento County, any county they go to, they also have a city business license with city winters. And it just seems to me that we don't want to just limit it to the Buckhorn truck, but we need to be a little more open where the Buckhorn truck is asking specifically about, this all started about being by Country Kitchen. Okay, on the backside of that parking lot, and Country Kitchen had a fit about it, and it got brought up, and a couple of the businesses brought, you know, their opinions and concerns about that, which has been spoken in the planning commission meetings. But at the same time, there's some of the same issues that we have with our Taco Truck. Who is actually not a winners resident, he was not a winners family. But we welcome them with both arms, because we love our Taco Truck. And they were kind of grandfathered in. We just need to, I think, expand on that and be fair enough that we can take care of our locals. So we're not sending that money somewhere else, because we're getting that tax revenue from that food product. They pay that money to them. And we get that from the county home licensing. I mean, they're already at various of ruining on a rotation basis, but usually Saturdays, which part of their money goes towards that business as well. So they're supporting locally in more than just one way. And that is the benefit of a food truck. With Youth Day, they're one of the two businesses that are local that we allow to stay from the beginning, who come at four o'clock in the morning, by the way, until 11 o'clock at night to feed whoever comes, not just for Youth Day, but for the after-party, etc. Which is what we usually do in the park afterwards. And they really dedicate a lot of time. They donate not just to our sports teams, but to a lot of events. A lot of food, a lot of local people benefit from the Buckhorn truck. And I just think that we need to be a little more open in consideration when we look at this work to make it very fair. Because everyone likes a good competition. And John Pickel himself has invited them and said, yes, I want competition. I think it's great. And if everybody here knows Buckhorn, we all love our food here locally. And I just hate to send them out, send them away. It just doesn't seem like that's the winners' welcome that we're known for. Counting my grandkids, I'm six generations deep. And I invite that kind of participation, because I want to see somebody do well. And say, it's you, good for you, you're doing well. Because that means they're going to hire more people, and they're going to grow. And that's going to benefit us in a lot of ways as winners towns. So I just would like to see that we strongly consider adopting this as soon as possible because of the sense of fact that this has been going on since June. They already paid the money out, and it's because somebody didn't like what they were doing. And they have all the licenses and the regulations. And then the other thing that the governor signed, they actually have less restrictions than they did have before. So it'd be nice to have a map of what's allowed. We did talk about that in the planning commission meeting, but it'd be nice to have one of those out there. So they're not limited to be just by Country Kitchen. If they wanted to be out, P G M building, because it's private property. If they wanted to be out there, and she may invite them, they could go over there. Just like directly from some of the other locations. So we know there's limits on Main Street. But not as many as I think that really going to be. I think it's going to be very clear and precise, just like our parking and everything else is. So there's no question, there's no limit time for violating those. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Does anyone else like to speak to this issue in a public hearing? Say none. We'll close the public hearing at 7:15. I have a number of comments and questions. I want the council members to go first. Does anyone you'd like to speak to?
I'll just say, I'm glad to see this finally getting taken care of. It's been quite some time since they tried to do something there at the corner. I'm glad to see it move upward, and I'm glad to see it finally get addressed and supported.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I understand that brick and mortar stores often feel that they're under attack with all the different business models that are out there, especially internet purchases. But, you know, the Taco Truck is just a great business model to deliver food to people that are hungry in this, in the time of day where they are. food to people that are hungry in this, in the time of day where they are, and you know, I kind of would support a taco truck on every corner, but anyway, yeah, I think it's great that this is moving forward and I support it.
So I just wanted to make sure it's clear to people in the city, you may not be here or maybe at home watching, that, I mean, there's been some comments made that we're trying to get rid of the taco truck, and that's so far from what's true, that's not what we're trying to do here with this proposed ordinance, is we're just trying to clean up exactly where the trucks are allowed, how many, all the regulations that go along with that. I think, like I say, the way discussions get going and a lot of information gets passed around, it's not, it's not actually accurate, so taco truck's not being kicked out of town, nobody has to worry about that. And yes, this did come up due to the Buckhorn truck wanting to locate on that corner, and concerns that were brought up with that were very valid, I know a lot of the concerns from the owners of Country Kitchen, I was at the planning commission meetings, I heard speak about people coming in and wanting to use their restrooms, and they're having to place that, and also people going behind their building and going to the bathroom back there and just creating a health hazard, but that's not something that this ordinance can address, I think this does not, we can't request, require that every food truck have a bathroom and parking, all that, so, but this, this process is going to say exactly where they can be, and it's proposed that we're expanding the areas by a lot from where they are now. Currently, in the ordinance, they're only left right there along railroad and I think one block to the south, oh, actually, one block to the south on railroad and then along Grant, in that intersection, and with this ordinance, it would open it up, there could be in the downtown A, downtown B, which is all along railroad from, actually, I pulled out a map and tried to look exactly where they could be, but yeah, I mean, they could actually go north on railroad, there's downtown B on the east side of there, I mean, all the way out along the highway, there's areas that are C1, C2, so this is, I mean, even Main Street, there are a couple sites along there, say in front of Lorenzo's building that has the Buckhorn catering, that's the area in there, someone wanting to have a food truck. So this really does open it up for a lot more potential food trucks if they want to come in, which I think it's good to open it up for that kind of competition, and I know I've also heard from John Pickel that he says this is kind of the way the food delivery business is going, not all of it, but some of it is, and you want to keep up, you've got to go with it. And I know this, the truck that's been down there previously on that corner of railroad, the up truck is not one that's owned by a Buckhorn, it's just, it's a business that starts with a Buckhorn, but the questions I had, and some of it's been discussed a little bit, was about the, how much it's going to cost for these permits, and what our permitting fee is, so is that accurate on that, these use permits, or Dave, that these permits are going to cost eighteen hundred dollars?
I believe, I think it is, I believe it's like seventeen sixty. Yeah, the more I thought about it, that's the use permit, fee structure, and it's for all use permits, it's an average. So you know, some use permits may be easier to process than others, but they're all sort of lumped in together under the single fee. But it is a one-time fee, and it's a, it's a fee that runs with the land, so let's say, and the property owner actually gets the permit, it's based on the Buckhorn's application, but it runs with the land, so theoretically, if the Buckhorn were not to be there, that property owner could lease it to someone else for the same, under the same conditions. So the Buckhorn paid the fee, though, I don't want to make you think that the landlord did, he did not, he has to consent to the application.
So one of the questions I have is, in this ordinance, we're proposing that Exhibit A, which is the map, how many can be located around that intersection along that area? But in other areas of town, we're not limiting that at all.
Yeah.
How can we, well, in one area, but not as...
I did it more for the safety, it was more for the safety aspects that we put limits around the intersection, that's the logic to why I kept it the way it was in the existing code. You as a council now obviously choose to do differently, but that was the thinking I had. I know there are intersections that are a safety concern, I don't want to downplay them, but that's sort of the key intersection, in a state highway. You know, you think, you think about that intersection, they're not likely going to go on two out of the three, maybe three out of the four corners, really, the one corner that's available is the general store site. I can't see, you know, because zombies, they don't have the room, obviously, the double M trucking site isn't in play, and I, oh, I guess they could go on very any property, it would seem unusual that they would have two food trucks on the same property, that's not impossible. So almost by default, if it isn't as onerous as it sounds.
I'm just thinking as we go east on Grant, there's, so you see one car sitting along there, or two, and so we're not going to regulate how many can be in that distance, but we're going to regulate...
And that's clearly, you know, the council has the discretion to do that, and again, as I was using arguments for the other streets, it's a use permit. And so on a case-by-case basis, we can evaluate, and maybe you just don't have that restriction, as Sam found out at the one meeting, nobody can understand that illustration anyhow, and I had to look at it a few times to figure it out myself. So maybe if you just get rid of it altogether, it simplifies it even more.
Under one of these, it says that applicants have to fingerprint it, and that was in the old ordinance, it's not something that you have taken out of the...
Well, I know we, I know we took out references to felonies, and if you're convicted of a felony, you couldn't apply for the license.
The applicant shall submit to fingerprinting by the police department of the city in connection with the application of the permit.
We require that for anybody who's going to go and do solicitation, you know, this is different, obviously, from a commercial standpoint, but that's where that comes from. Sort of broadly applies both to those stationary vendors, carts that we were talking about, and to the food trucks, and to the roaming carts that would go into a park, for example, because you can actually set up inside a public park, if there isn't a vendor that already has a license for the city to sell in that park, like say, maybe like for a baseball park where there's a concessionaire, you actually have the ability to go on that public park site and set up as a, as a food cart and sell, and so being around children, I think there's some of the logic for fingerprint.
And when, on the issue on Youth Day, those types of events, there is, there is a line in there that a special use permit shall not be required for fundraising activities, special sales, events which are sponsored by the school district, or approved by the city, so that is addressed, that we have those types of events, right?
And I had a chance, and I started writing some notes to respond to Mr. Osse, but example of the number fourteen on page seven talks about site distances at intersections, it causes impairment, so his concern that we would allow, or wouldn't, a food truck that would cause a site distance problem is a condition that they, um, going in, they can't do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, the other one that I would like to make sure that if this does get passed on these, these sidewalk vendors, you can see them setting up on the sidewalk and blocking most of the sidewalk, and that's something that, if this passes, we're going to have to, if they even, if people come and try to set up, I...
Right, again, the, the, now, the thing will be complaint-driven, I'll say that much, and, and I did talk to the chief about this at one of our staff meetings, he wanted to make it clear that if they were creating a blockage of, not only people that are disabled, but also anybody, that we have the right to have them move and relocate to a safer location.
They also have, you have temporary permits in there?
You know, we haven't really gotten to that, but we think there will be some interest in special events that may not be directly associated with that event, that's sort of on the, on the outskirts of the event. I've seen it myself, and a few times I've come here, you sort of see vendors that are outside of sort of the core area, but there's, they're vending, and they may only be there because of our event, so we're looking at, obviously, not make them go through, maybe a non-erous of processes, somebody that would be doing it on a regular basis.
Come up with a, say a one-day...
Sort of one-day special permit, somewhat like ABC does for their licensing.
I can see something, a town like the tractor parade, where it's set up out there, and you know, some people in town, they could get, get in line for the buck trucks, so they can get going, and almost stop at the truck, drive her out.
Right, right, so that, that's, and we haven't developed that permit, but that's something we will be doing.
Okay, those are the only comments I had and questions, I'd like to see, please open it up to, to have a possibility of food trucks coming in, it is something that allows people to get started in business, and so...
If the consensus says that's an easy fix between now and the second reading.
Any further comments?
Just a question, I have to clarify for my own, the one-time fee on the use permit, is that, if not an annual fee, one-time fee?
One-time.
That's what I want...
The only annual recurring fee is your business license.
That's fine, thank you.
Chamber, can you get those people the business licenses to come to Chamber? So, any other questions or comments before we open up the motion? I have one, yes. Dave? Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Do you see a working relationship between county health and city, say, get a complaint with somebody's health exam? So we can't do anything about it?
I've had a few contacts with the county health on other health-related issues having to do with restaurants, but, you know, my way of working on this particular application if it comes forward is, they have to provide proof as a condition of approval for the use permit, that they have clearances from the county health department. It's a lot like the cottage food industry businesses that can be done out of a home now, the first step is go to the county, get the health department clearance, once you've got the health department clearance, then come to the city and apply for your entitlements, that way, there's no confusion as to, oh, you never told me I had to go see the health department. And so that's the process that we're looking at in place right now. Now, they're going to have to get a business license, and when somebody comes in and applies your business license, there, there's a planning check on that, and that's where these types of things, if we see food truck, bang, we can say, okay, can you show us your permit to do this? So there's, there's a checks and balances as it goes in, so those types of red flags, if we receive a complaint from somebody saying, gosh, I, I don't think it's helping, or something, we would, we would direct those people direct, straight to the county. You know, I tell people, we want to stay in our lane of things, and in this case, if there's a complaint, we'll direct it right, we'll straight over to county health and make people... I did confirm, I did talk to, well, his email, with a, with a woman who's the director of the Yellow County Health, about the stationary food carts, and if they're stopping, and she goes, absolutely, the, the state law does not preempt them having to get our approvals before they can operate.
Hey, Bill, if I could clarify, on Youth Day, we have...
Can you move to my complete summary on the review?
Sorry, I was laughing. We have like fifty vendors for Youth Day alone, and I have a checklist that I have to go through, and I have to verify that I've seen the one permit, I have to have a copy of that, I have to make sure they have their business licenses and one-day business license, as well as insurance and several other things that have to be in place, that actually set up documents. And if they show up to set up, I don't care if it's four o'clock in the morning, you show up and you don't have something in place, I'm sorry, you've got to go, because the health department shows up and checks us, and then we get involved, and we don't want any of our ones to, you know, to do it because of that, but just so you know that, it all goes right back to the county, and they're, they're the enforcement. I think the challenge that we do have, and I think we're going to have with this new thing too, are those food carts, because of the one people that I always have to have our local police enforce to go away, because they didn't pay what our vendors are paying to be at that park for that crowd, and you know, like, snow cones, every year is a snow cone thing, right, and the guy comes around the corner, I'm like, every year, I have to, I actually have to get a police officer to enforce, and they leave, he's, well, I'll just pay for it, well, you had your chance, you should have done that ahead of time. But I think we can be dealing with that at our other events, but just so you know, that there's...
Thank you. There's no more questions or comments, I'll open it up for a motion?
I'll, I'll move staff recommendation for ordinance number twenty-eight oh-six, retain street vendors and food trucks.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, move? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing consideration on the cottages at Carter Ranch.
I think this is a simple one, at least that seems to be on the surface to be. The Carter Ranch project was done in two phases, the first phase is built and it's out there, and then there's a detention pond, which was to accommodate six lots that were going to have moderate income houses, for lots of reasons, driven by the fact that Winters Highlands and Calhoun Estates never heard, they could never get rid of the drainage on because they didn't have an alternate way to get rid of storm drainage, it came from that existing subdivision. As we all know, that's been solved by the fact that those two other projects have moved forward, and a long history that I will embody with, that the current representative, Mr. Sutter's here tonight, to try to get approval to develop the six lots the way they were intended back in two thousand and four. From what I can tell, and he wasn't able to find anything, it never completed the process of entitlements back then, even if it had, with all the possible extensions to tentative maps, it would have ultimately lapsed. So that's where we are today, the six lot tentative map for phase two, that was the detention pond now, the owner, Mr. Sutter, and his, his investors want to move forward with developing those lots, and they have to go through similar processes they would have if they had done it in two thousand and four, there has to be a subdivision improvement agreement, there's conditions of approval that were applicable to this project back in two thousand and four. I did get an email that I didn't share with you from Mr. Sutter concerning some of the conditions that appear to no longer apply, and I basically left it with, the city engineer will go over these with him as part of the final map process, and any conditions that are no longer applicable because of circumstances that have changed since the project was originally considered in two thousand and four will be deleted, and they will not be something that, I think, we'll be obligated to try to resolve if in fact they've already resolved. The planned development overlay, there are standards that were part of a planned development overlay zone, they were to have been included on these six lots, but as I said, that entitlement process never was completed, and so there's a planned development overlay standard ordinance, simply to add the standards that were allowed on the first phase, and if you go by any, you're all, which are very familiar, much more so than I am, there's reduced setbacks, there's a whole lot of things that they got, they're simply applying those exact standards to these six lots. And they also went through, although it's not, in your purview, to necessarily review the design review of those homes at the planning commission level, which is, which they approved, and again, the houses look exactly like if they'd been built in two thousand and four, except it don't come to me, the updates in the building codes that have taken place in the interim. And that's pretty much it, I'll try to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions? I have one. Condition forty-six and forty-seven, the forty-six calls for a retaining wall should be installed, forty-seven says they shall increase the Highland Chamber, are we required, is there to be a wall, Hannah Chamber?
No, no, and there's been a sound wall put in on the backside as part of the improvements for the heartland and stone throw, that there's, I think it's a lift station, is it, John, that's done, going in there?
Two lift stations, two of them.
Yeah, and so the, the sound wall was put, put in to mitigate the noise from the generators when they have to operate. So forty-seven is definitely not in play, and I don't believe forty-six is either. But again, these are ones that will, will resolve and have a, have them pared down to what it should be when he moves forward with the final map.
Yeah, ultimately, the subdivision improvement agreement will cover this stuff, that'll come back.
So we'll get a reword to...
Yeah, because the applicant's right, there's some things that are not applicable. They've just kind of moved everything over into this, consistent with everything... Uh, they've just kind of moved everything over into this, consistent with everything that was done in.
Two thousand and four, yeah.
So we moved those in, uh, the, the city engineer will, uh, basically squeeze everything down into, to make it very current. They'll pick all that up in subdivision improvement and then move that comes back.
Yeah, you know, because you have, it's a, it's a ministerial, you have to stand for final map and basically say, you know, this is what we understood when we approved the tentative map, this is what we ultimately understood we were approved.
Would the applicant like to say anything for the public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, City Manager Dave. Uh, no, I, I was a minority partner in this deal back in two thousand and four, and I ended up with a transaction after all these years. But, uh, we're just trying to keep it moving forward and finish it out, uh, the last six remaining lots. So just finish the subdivision.
Questions, do you think? No question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and at this time at seven thirty-seven, I will open up the public hearing. Any comments from the public on this? No, the call to the public hearing is seven thirty-six, seven thirty-eight? Yeah, I would just say I, I think it's great to see these lots finally being developed. And I know part of the conditions are that you'll have to beat all the compaction for the, the fill that you have to do in there, and that will all be addressed, I'm sure, by the engineers. But, um, this is gonna, if, if it's passed by the council, it will provide more affordable housing in town, which is something we've worked a long time on, bringing the winners, so I think that's a great proposal to focus. Anyone else have a comments, any discussion? I want to open it up for motion. Yes, John?
One more. Thank you. Um, so this is an all affordable project, and it includes every flavor of affordable housing. Very low, low, high, um, in the project, and, um, over the years that, you know, this is fourteen years ago, and, uh, when, when we structured all the deals, we, we actually had some affordable housing money that we could put towards it, and we carried back a lot of silent seconds, and some of them, they were pretty large amounts that, that we brought back. And, uh, now this included for sale, very low-income housing. And, uh, Dan's left, um, but, um, I can't say enough for the work of, of Dan Wire and Dan Subworld at the time. They brought in, uh, a, a group called Neighbor Works, eight-yeared education, they on how to buy a house, credit management, money management. And they dragged all these people through this whole process to pre-qualify them to be able to buy these homes. We worked with the developer at the time, and in, for sale very low was absolutely unheard of, and it's probably almost impossible now because nobody really has that money to carry that silent second back. But, uh, probably the, the most encouraging thing is that we, over the years, we've had probably four other people already pay off silent seconds. Couple of weeks ago, we had a gentleman come in here, and he paid off silent second, which was sizable, like seventy thousand bucks. Uh, he, he made the last payment on that silent second. And the pride of ownership, most of these people came out of a winter trailer park. And, uh, the pride of, of ownership, this guy was very excited about paying this thing off because, you know, this is gonna be my house. I'm the owner, and, uh, it's a real credit. Uh, the developers on the project, uh, did a very good job. It's a nice project. If you go into the homes, they're nice homes. This is a nice project. And I, uh, will tell you that it's one of those things that's made a difference in a lot of people's lives, so. Anyway, from the staff, uh, perspective, I, I will share that over the years, we've been trying to get these six lots done forever. So, uh, we're ready to see if they can.
So you mentioned these are for different affordability levels, and in the staff report it says that it's for a moderate income.
These are the last, these are the last that, that, um, and, and, and they kind of reminded me about it. We didn't let them build the lots first. We made them build all the very low and the lows first, and that was a lot. Uh, it, that was the big fight on everything. Uh, I will share that amongst the staff and amongst the folks that were on the council at the time, we, we put a lot of money, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars into this project, and, um, I, it, it, Dave Olson, you know, it kind of hit me, I'm going, hey, that's right, we, we need to help very low first. Anyway, the buildings and lots, but, uh, we need the lots to.
I have a question on the process. Um, so what is the process now for these homes?
Uh, they'll, they'll go out, they'll build the homes, they'll market them, and sell them. They have a ten-year restriction.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they, um, they're gonna have to jive this with the overall, this, this project, and I'm sure that Dan will dust it off, but, uh, there's no affordable housing plan as part of this thing, so, uh, as, as they're selling these things, they're gonna have to hook, uh, the deed restriction onto it. Uh, and, and Dan will, Dan will figure that out.
If there's no more discussion, I will open it up for a motion. So.
Okay. I move with the recommendation of the staff. Um, it's a three-part recommendation, I move all three parts, uh, for the cottages circle, cottages at Carter Ranch, three consideration updates to tentative settlement.
Do we have a second? A second? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there you go. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
More decisions in the hall there. Next on our agenda tonight, we have the second reading and adoption of the ordinance twenty-eighteen oh-seven. Ordinance of the City Council, updating the updated downtown parking master plan, parking fines, and municipal code. Chief.
You bring Mayor and City Council. City manager, members of the community, and have parking, parking, parking. When we talk about parking for the next couple of council meetings is, uh, we identify and patch the holes in our municipal code as we, as you're already, we're enforcing the downtown, pursuit of downtown master parking plan. Uh, the city attorney and I both come to the conclusion in our agreement that, uh, perhaps a comprehensive rewrite of municipal code may be in our future, but really who has the time for that? So, anyway, we're just plugging the holes to fit this thing up and running. Uh, first item I have in front of you tonight for your consideration is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance, uh, to update the municipal code, reference the administration of parking, parking enforcement. Uh, just as a refresher, it's, uh, just a branch of compliance with the California Gift Code, which has changed since the last time municipal code was updated, uh, which places, uh, the authority to update the fines in the hands of the governing body of the city council by resolution. The other part of it is, uh, requesting, uh, authority to be placed with the chief of police to appoint hearing officers to review contested parking citations. Uh, hearing is actually a second level of, of contesting a parking citation. Under current law, they're allowed a review and then a hearing. So, you know, it will be just for the hearing officer on that second review.
Uh, the.
The review is done internally by the police department, so, yeah, we're getting those processes in place, so right now proper forms and.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's, they get the review, it's an informal process upfront, and then if the, uh, citation is upheld, then they are offered a hearing for the hearing officer. Uh, because we don't know when to, uh, what to expect with the hearing officers and, or request for hearing, and also due to time, that's why I'm requesting the authority to be placed in the, uh, chief of police that I can appoint hearing officers as necessary. We don't come from council every time to do that. Uh, the other part of this, uh, ordinance was also to do away with the, uh, Parking Administrative adjudication process manual, which was drafted back in the nineteen nineties, and needs also to be, uh, updated, and also it's very, um, uh, difficult to operate within, uh, the confines of that. The California Gift Code outlines how to handle the review and hearing processes, which is also, uh, referenced in our policy manual, and it said kept up to date for any changes. With that, I'll open up to any questions you may have about that particular item.
Any questions? Let's see, any questions on that? Anyone from the public? Want to comment on it?
You can. I came from Oakland. You want parking problems, go to Oakland.
Yeah, well, that's. Any questions? I know.
I'll just say that. We do not have a parking problem at Winters.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Bill.
All right, I'll move to adopt the ordinance twenty-eighteen dash seven. Ordinance, uh, City Council, uh, Street Winners, updating downtown parking master plan, parking fines, and then the Winners Municipal Code as stated.
So I get. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none? That's the event, so thank you. Next up, I believe we have another part.
The next parking item is, uh, is to read about the resolution to update those here winners, schedule fines and penalties for regulated time limit parking penalty, penalty. Uh, this is in conjunction with an ordinance to update the time limit parking municipal code. Uh, as it's currently written, we have several subsections in this code that deals with twenty-four minutes, one hour, I'm sorry, twenty-four minutes, forty minutes, one hour, and two hours, and they're all individual separate subsections. Well, the downtown parking plan, we have a thirty-minute time zones, so, uh, what we are proposing, or staff is proposing, is, uh, amending the municipal code, which is actually title number three, so I'm not sure which comes first, the ordinance and then the resolution. Can we take things out of order?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
You can do both. Go ahead.
Yeah, concurrently, I guess I'm taking them on both concurrently, how's that? So the, uh, municipal code, we're asking just to streamline the municipal code, so to just make it, uh, the violation of violation of limited time limit parking. Uh, that also leaves us flexible that if in the future we designate future time limits, uh, say ninety minutes, uh, we don't have to come back to the council and amend the municipal code yet, again. So we're eliminating the subsections, so twenty-four, forty-one, hour, two hour, and the same violation of the designated time limit. Uh, so that's the amendment to the ordinance. And in conjunction with that is a resolution, uh, to update the, um, schedule of fines and penalties to reflect that, as well as to include a late payment penalty, uh, which we, we caught we did not have, uh, which is in accordance with the California Gift Code that the city council can add to their schedules of penalties and fines and penalties.
Times.
Yeah, with that, I will answer any questions?
Questions? I have a question on the ordinance. Um, it's part B, it says when, it, it talks about, um, times of enforcement between the hours of seven AM and six PM on any day except Sundays and holidays. For a period longer than the time limits specified on municipal signs. So, I thought, uh, during the parking committee meetings, we were talking about Monday through Friday, eight to six. This one looks like we're enforcing it on Saturday days as well and starting at seven AM instead of eight.
Maybe my misunderstanding, and I apologize. I thought it was following the, uh, the typical, uh, yeah, Monday through Saturday excluding Sundays and holidays.
You remember, John, the discussions?
It was between eight and six, but again, this is giving us the discretion, so if we want to do it from eight to six, we can do it from eight to six.
A little point, the municipal code prior, uh, reflected exactly that, I mean, as far as seven to six, except Sundays and holidays. So that's what the municipal code previously reflected.
So this gives us flexibility that we may put signs up that say Monday through Friday.
Correct.
That if we want to change it later, it's a.
Yeah, at the end of the day, the simplest way to describe this is that we have the ability to put up signs restricting time. And then this, this gives us the discretion between these hours, um, to, to enforce it. And we'll do that entirely by signage and documentation that will be out there.
That was the only question I had. Any other discussion? So, Ethan, do we need to take both these separately?
I think that'd be easier for the sake of the mist.
And so I will first open it up for the resolution.
I just, I would offer Tina the, uh, the public comment.
Tina?
Yes.
You'd like to provide some of your input?
Or Matthew?
Wait, I'm just waiting that, you know.
Okay.
Again, Winters does not have a parking problem. Again, uh, I'm just concerned, you know, somebody's gonna come around with a little chalk and then come back. I, who's administering this? I think this is just an overview. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll just ride my bike.
Yes, okay.
I'll move to co-resolution, twenty-eighteen dash seventy, to adopt and update the schedule of fines and penalties regarding regulated time limit parking, late payment penalty.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none? Passes. And then we have the second one, which is the interaction, the ordinance forty-eighteen oh-nine, to amend the municipal code, regulate parking on certain streets.
Move staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none? Passes. Thank you, Tina.
And as a side note, I ordered the chopstick actually yesterday. And I realized that there's not a municipal code for giving, removing the mark, you know, uh, removing the marks, so I submitted that to the, uh, city attorney today for his review, so I'll be coming back to the council with all that.
I know how to back my car up at the right time.
I'll be watching you, Tina. Okay, next item on our agenda is the Yolo Habachat Conservancy loan agreement.
Mayor and council, um, this is, and I'm related to the Yolo Habachat Conservancy, which, um, you all recall that we adopted the HCP and CCP last, or earlier this year, uh, so that we could start, uh, it's been a long process to, to get that moving forward to implement, um, dealing with endangered species within the Yolo County region. Um, as you likely recall, the, um, the HCP, HCP is gonna be funded out impact fees, uh, that will be paid by developers and others that are developing within the region. However, those impact fees won't start coming in until the coming year. And so as of right now, there's work that, um, that the Habachat Conservancy has to do to get started, um, on implementing this program, but they don't have any revenue coming in to actually start that work. So, they reached out to all the jurisdictions who were, who are members of the HCP, Winters Davis, Willland, West Sacramento, as well as the county, to request a, a, a loan agreement for each of the communities that's essentially startup funds to, uh, for them to get started implementing their program. It would be paid back out of the impact fees that they, um, that they receive in coming years. So, uh, I brought forward a loan agreement. The amount that Winters is being asked to, uh, to lend is ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. The other communities are all lending around fifty thousand dollars because we, we generally have a smaller share because of our relatively smaller size compared to the other jurisdictions. I think the, the, the terms of the loan agreement are, uh, are outlined in the staff report. I think you'll recognize, um, I would say it's a fairly soft loan in, in terms of, of not having real rigorous, uh, uh, terms for us to recover the funds, but part of that is based on the fact. But part of that is based on the fact that we are a member of this organization and we have a membership on the board, as do all the other entities that run money for this startup. And so we do have the ability to hold that accountable and ensure that you do get paid back. And as I discussed with county council, the members of the league, putting this together, if they don't have the impact fees, there's really no way for them to pay us back. So it's not like they have other assets that we could, that we could go after. So we really, you know, assuming everything works well, we'll get paid back, I think, within the next few years. And we just need to make sure that through our membership on the board that we ensure that they are tracking these debts and making sure that all the jurisdictions get paid back as soon as it's reasonably feasible while still allowing them to do their work. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? I have no questions. That's pretty straightforward, Jimmy. Anybody in the public like to comment?
Nope.
That's from public, yeah.
Can I make a comment, though?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have a comment that I think is just very important for us to support. And I'm really happy that this is moving forward and that we have a chance to help it get started.
Here, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash seventy-one, authorizing the city manager to enter into a loan agreement with Yolo Habitat Conservancy to fund the implementation of the Yolo Habitat Conservancy Plan, Natural Communities Conservation Plan during the twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Let me, that was our last agenda item. We have investor reports and treasury reports for your review. Sitting down, do you have a question?
Mayor and council, just a couple of things. December twelfth, we come tomorrow, Wednesday, we'll be having a, the second of our strategic planning workshops. Topic will be on public safety, six o'clock, at Public Safety Facility. I'm told that there's going to be a lot of people out there because in the apparatus bay, the Winter Sports are going to be having their awards ceremony. So hopefully we'll draw some of them and then talk about public safety and that stuff. But both of the chiefs and the departments that put together a very good program now, but it's going to be an opportunity for the council and the community to hear about current issues and future issues in public safety that we have to look towards addressing. Just for the information of the council, a week from Friday, on December fourteenth, the SAC Valley City Managers Group is getting together. And we're going to go meet with Lauren Gill, who's the town manager in Paradise. And we're going to go up and we're going to spend a good part of the entire day talking with her, brainstorming. It's going to kind of be a very high-level professional workshop to, you know, just talk with her and provide some professional advice on some things that Paradise is going to need. It's going to include, we're going to go on a tour of Paradise to see exactly where they're actually going. But interesting day, so climbing up attending and going up there. Council mentioned the groundbreaking for the Winter's Healthcare Foundation. That's a huge project for us. Very proud of where they've come. I've, you know, I had the opportunity to see the formation of Winter's Healthcare in the first year. And they are an amazing organization, very good for this community. This facility will be amazing. And as we, Shelley, Dan, and myself, we, you know, we can remember going to West SAC and buying that property and going, we need to get something good to come out of this thing. There's, back in the day for redevelopment, we wanted to do a good project. We wanted to do a mixed-use project. And at the end of the day, we were able to put together a land that will include a senior center, portable senior housing, healthcare, which is desperately needed in our community, and a little bit of commercial work along with Yolo Credit. Yes, all in the same thing. Finance, public facility, housing, healthcare, all in the same facility. Chris Kelch, that entire board, when they opened that, we will need to celebrate because it's a long road that they got there. And we should all be very proud of them. They've been grinding. And for them to make it there, very happy for them. The good news is that we've got all the permanent applications from Blue Mountain Terrace. So the good news is, is we adopted our impact fees. But they don't go into effect until January one. And I can tell you that everybody's coming in to get their permits so that they don't have to pay the higher impact fees. So we've got Blue Mountain Terrace in there ready to go. As far as the senior apartments go, the Freeway Hotel, their permit is ready to be picked up right now. So we've got those all going. Last thing. Our Yolo Communications Agency, we are going text to nine one one. You know, these millennials, you know, they don't even call anybody on the phone anymore. We now have to have text to nine one one. So just so that you know, if anything ever goes down, you can whip out your smartphone and you can text a message to nine one one. It'll, our transplanted will hit.
I thought what I read in that was that that was for people who had difficulty calling or, you know, there were certain limitations on who should be using it. It's not for everybody to report it.
Well, you know, anybody can use it. Anybody can use it.
That's not what they're recommending, is what I read.
Well, you know, they want you to call. They want you to call nine one one. One of those over there, their ability to call. But no, it's, supposedly it doesn't go live until January eight. I'll tell you, it's live right now. We all sat there at our board meeting and did it at work.
Did they say that it would be faster to call?
Yeah. They did say. Because there was a little clip on the news this morning, too. Yeah. But anyway, if you want to text emergency to somebody at nine one one, and you think that's going to get you, you know, the examiner's just calling on the phone, God help you. But we've got it. It's a new feature. We're modern with everyone. And then finally, right here, Sunday, September ninth, at Blue Note Brewing Company in Woodland, seven fifty Dead Cat Alley, they're going to be having another fundraiser for the folks up in Paradise in the greater View County area. They set a goal, they want to raise about fifty thousand dollars. And people should go. As a matter of fact, we'll throw this up on the city's social media to get some word out. It's going to be very interesting next week, showing up. I've known Lauren Gill now for probably more than ten years. And just to hear what's going on. It's an amazing circumstance because as you talk to people in the know, you talk to insurance agents, you talk to people that have been there, you look at each demographics, you hear what people are starting to say. Everybody's very supportive, but now you're hearing talks, talk from various people saying, well, you know, should we really be rebuilding in these areas? And I think it is going to be an amazing process for them. And who knows how it's going to turn out. But we'll go up and listen to them. Some of the stories that we're hearing of the amazing bravery that happened. Been talking with some of our staff that were up there. And there were acts of absolute heroism. And there's also a lot of trauma. And it's very traumatic for the folks that went up there. Many of those first responders and the people who went up there. The last week, they were just coming through trying to find bodies of people that were missing. I was imagining that a couple of years from now, there's going to be movie. There will be literally seminars put on about what really happened well and what didn't. So anyway, staff, that's my report.
Thank you. So on that, I will adjourn this meeting in honor of President George H.W. Bush and his lifelong service to our country at eight oh seventeen.
Lingus Cities is going to have an event, supposedly it's on schedule for that in March. We are, or our ship is going to be cheaper when it's... But it'll be, you know, like the Sacramento Valley region. But it'll be a blast of fire, most likely.
I bet it'd be, I had a meeting which involved, I bet you we could do biggest attendance of anybody to one of those big locations. If you offered, if they came up with a program on various things.
Yeah, they wanted us to give up maybe our July date, our July twenty-fourth date, but not, we're keeping our July days.
It's really easy. Do you know where the Worman Church is?
Let me see.
On Anderson Street across... If you, if you go to the middle square...